Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, Mr. Commissioner Leitner?
Here.
Commissioner Walz? Commissioner Rice?
Right.
Commissioner Duckham?
Right.
Commissioner Alexander? Commissioner Mahoney?
Here.
Commissioner Palacek?
Here.
Commissioner Elwell?
Here.
Chairman Chatwell?
Here.
Seven present.
This is your first opportunity for public comment. Anyone like to give public comment? Any public comment. Seeing none, public comment is now closed.
Good morning. Wonderful. First up this morning, we have the Healthy Communities Update. Adam, are you kicking it off, or, oh, Shelley? Okay.
All right. Good morning. Just want to make sure that my presentation is up here. Who wants to help you with that one? Do you have?
Do you bring it with you?
I brought it on a flash, but I sent it. Do you need it? Okay. I figured it was just uploaded.
No, it's ours.
Okay. Flash drives are a good backup plan. Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. 2016. Right there. Get the full screen. Okay. Thank you. I am a bit technology challenged, I will admit. So, good morning, and I'm Michelle, or Shelley Bolinger, with the Jackson County Health Department, and I'm here to present on your Healthy Communities Strategic Plan, part of your overall strategic plan. I'm presenting on behalf of myself and Amy Schultz, who is a part-time medical director for us, and we integrate with her with many of the activities that we do with Allegiance Health. So, I have 15 minutes, so I'm going to make this as brief as possible. I'm not going to read these slides to you. I will hit the highlights. I know you have the information in front of you. So, just to go back, the vision that we laid out back in, I want to say, 2009, was that healthy community vision: Jackson County residents enjoy phenomenal health through affordable, accessible health care, a community commitment to wellness, and increased public recreation opportunities. We morphed then, through the years, with the Health Improvement Organization, and our new vision is to create a culture of continuous health improvement in our community. Whoops. Sorry, my slides, I'm thinking they're going to come up slowly here. Okay. Our strategic plan for 2013 through 2020 included a variety of networking pieces along with health action teams, and I just wanted to point out, through the years, we've really developed and added some additional health action teams. As you're aware, the Health Improvement Organization works closely with Cradle to Career, with the educational goals, because many of these pieces, as you know, all work together to improve overall health status. Through the years, we've added some additional pieces, such as the Health Services Action Coalition, which assists with access to health care. We realize that financial stability is a big part of everything that we do, and we now have a networking piece working closely with that. We've added, in addition, the Immunization Action Community Coalition. This isn't just the flu form, as it used to be, but it's to increase childhood immunizations, working with organizations and businesses, families, and schools. The Maternal-Child Health Action Team, for all things related to maternal and child health. The Teen Pregnancy Prevention Initiative, and also the Jackson County Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. So, we have now all these action teams that are part of our overall strategic plan, and that's where the work gets done. So, our Healthy Communities strategic goals. The basic core of our goals for 2016, one is to reduce the obesity rate amongst Jackson County residents to be at or lower than the national average, or still much higher there; to reduce our smoking rate and our second-hand smoke exposure in Jackson County; to improve the behavioral health and emotional wellness of Jackson County residents; to decrease infant mortality and teen pregnancy rates; and to decrease substance abuse amongst adolescents and adults in Jackson County. The county health rankings, you may or may not be aware, is a health report that comes out by the University of Wisconsin's Population Health Institute, with funding through Robert Wood Johnson, and this report's been brought before us since, I want to say, 2010. So, I'm going to show you the last three years, and really, this is the bottom line when you're looking at the wellness of a community, because these are your basic life expectancy with mortality, morbidity, which is your quality of life, and then all those health factors that relate to such bottom-line numbers. So, health behaviors, you know, what we eat, do we get proper exercise, smoking rates, our sexual activities, clinical care, which is access to health care, and whether or not we have the right amount of providers for oral health, for general health, socio and economic status, so our unemployment rate, our high school graduation rates, our college graduate rates, the physical environment, as we know, our air and our water quality and our housing. So, all of these factors have numbers that boil down to our bottom-line rate for Jackson County. So, as you can see, well, the best number to have would be one, and out of 82 counties, you can see we've gone from 48 to 50 to 52, so not heading in the right direction there. You can see the mortality rate that has improved, the morbidity rate has gotten worse at 65 in 2015, and then the overall health factors, there are some improvements there. 2013, we were 61, and we've improved up to 47. And so, some of the other factors, you can see that we've made some progress with health behaviors, clinical care, not so much in the social and economic, and a little improvement, if you will, from 78 with the physical environment. We know there's other contributing factors, social and economic and environmental factors, that contribute to the health of a community: lack of health insurance, difficulty assessing affordable health services, poor communication between providers and patients, patients' inaccurate understanding of their health risks, lack of social and emotional support, lack of community health policy development, need for coordinated environmental and system change efforts, unemployment, educational level, and, of course, annual household income. So, it's poverty levels, basically. Some of our successes, we've had several through the years, and again, this is where the list gets large, but that's wonderful, but I don't want to read all of these to you, but some of these new networks within our coordinating council that I've mentioned already, especially the work, I would say, with the C2C, that Cradle to Career and the Health Improvement Organization, because those things so work closely together. As you're aware, Cradle to Career received a Lumina grant. We were one of 75 communities receiving this funding, and the primary strategy of that is preparing African-American and/or economically disadvantaged high school students for post-secondary education. So, this was a wonderful funding piece for our community. The Behavioral Health Action Team, a couple pieces there, that we've secured grant funding to contract a project manager to further the group's work, to establish community-wide protocols for screening for trauma and referring to appropriate services. Also, excuse me, Project Aware, which is working with the behavioral health of all of our middle school and high school students, was working very closely now under the ISD, and recently, over 100 school staff have been trained in the Mental Health First Aid, Maternal-Child Health Action Team. We recently collaborated, we work with MSU and U of M and senior Eastern Michigan nursing students, and one of their projects was to train community partners in safe sleep best Also, our Community Collaborative Council has really been working together, again, this Cradle to Career and the HIO, they just had a first champion retreat, and the champions are those people that are leading the work that's happening in those collaboratives. The Smoke-Free Health Action Team, we recently conducted a needs assessment of health professionals and tobacco users to determine the knowledge and awareness of tobacco cessation resources in the community. Also, they've provided trainings to clinical service providers on the five As, which is a method to ask, assess, advise, assist, and arrange for tobacco treatment for successful quit attempts. The Tobacco 21 Campaign Advocacy, we've been able to seek resources throughout the community regarding this campaign, and we currently have 11 resolutions signed from our community stakeholders to increase the age for the legal sale of tobacco to 21. The Teen Pregnancy Prevention Initiative, well, actually, there'll be a slide upcoming. Our teen pregnancy rate continues to drop. We still have more work to do in the city, but overall county average has dropped. We hosted and developed the Irish video. This is the second video using Jackson County teens who provide testimonial as far as how the teen pregnancy has affected their life. Excuse me.
The teen pregnancy rate drop, is that a percentage of number of youth eligible to be pregnant, or is that a total number of pregnancies that is less?
It's a rate per 1,000 teens, 15 to 19-year-olds.
Oh, yeah. Less teens?
No. The rate is per 1,000 teens, so that way we can compare ourselves with other counties, with other states, and so forth. So, we premiered the Irish video at the Michigan Theater in November, and we had 179 attendees, and it was just a wonderful, the parents of the teens, community members, a lot of good conversation that occurred in that event, and now that video is also being shared throughout all Jackson County communities. We provide presentations to the schools, if requested. We also are now selling that video, and we sell it around the state of Michigan as well. That money goes back into that program. The Nutrition Health Action Team, we've initiated healthy concessions at two Jackson County schools, Northwest and Concord. Also, the healthy vending that we've initiated here at Jackson County facilities. The Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition, the good part there is that they are now aligned with the Health Improvement Organization, as you saw, another health action team. We've responded to the need for a à la teen support group in the community, and recently collaborated with the Prosecutor's Office for the countywide drug summit that just took place in December regarding the misuse and abuse of prescription drugs, and, of course, our growing heroin problem in our community. We also had the Active Living Health Action Team, that was the physical activity, but it's now Act of Living, because that aligns with a lot of grant funding and opportunities. And we recently, that action team struggled for leadership, but the Walkable Communities Coalition in December became the champion for that. And you can see some things with Complete Streets that have occurred out in front here, with purchasing bike racks and installing along the downtown Michigan Ave. This is just a couple slides with the teen pregnancy piece, because as a success, the bottom slide showing that where the rates have dropped, this is phenomenal for our community. I mean, we've been working on this one since the early '90s. Also, the top slide, 2013, would be the most current data that we have, because data is always in the rear, as you're aware, but our teen pregnancy rate, birth rate, and repeat teen birth rates, as you can see, we still have a huge problem in the city of Jackson. Yeah, that's where we're spending a lot of our energy. So, now, the areas of concern, these will be just some quick slides showing some statistics, and I want you to pay attention to these statistics, because I have a quick activity at the end, where I'm going to ask you to select, I'll provide a little ballot, where you can select your top three choices of the areas of concern where you feel that we need to spend our energy. So, here, we're going to roll out the statistics, and this is also from the most recent Community Health Assessment, 2014, and from the MyFIRE profile for healthy youth. So, only 10% of the individuals surveyed in our Community Health Assessment understand physical activity and nutrition guidelines. So, lots of education and awareness that needs to occur. Roughly 30% of county and 36% of county residents smoke. So, that's compared to the Michigan County average rate of 21%, so very high. About 31% of mothers smoked during pregnancy. 43% of middle school and 52% of high school students report exposure to second-hand smoke, so smoking in their communities, smoking in their homes, and that's just in the past seven days. Roughly 59% felt worried, tense, anxious in the past 30 days, so a lot of behavioral health issues, 59%. 40% of residents are classified as obese. This is obese, this is the worst. This is overweight. No, no. No, no. I'm not going to do that. So, if we add the overweight, though, we're still at roughly 70%. So, 30% of our community is of a good weight. Further height, their BMI. We all just need to be seven foot tall, that would solve the problem. About 36% have high blood cholesterol, okay? That's from 34% in 2011. So, obviously, this leads to heart disease. Roughly 40% have high blood pressure, okay? The same thing, leads to cardiovascular disease. 28% of adults are better than the states, 20% here, and 54% of middle school and 52% of high school students meet the physical activity guidelines. We're all busy on our iPads and our iPhones. Only 10% of adults, 30% of middle school, and 23% of high school meet nutrition guidelines. 10% of adults.
Wait a minute. You tell me the middle school and high school?
Yes, because we're feeding them lunch and breakfast, and we're following good guidelines.
You're providing them, whether they're eating.
We have to measure what falls in the wastebasket at the end of the lunch, yeah. Good point.
You're providing us donuts.
Right, right, those donuts. Oops. He's trying to get you here. So, about 25% report their neighborhood is somewhat too extremely dangerous for exercising alone at night. So, whether that's true, or whether that's a perception, it still makes a difference between somebody putting on their tennis shoes and going out for a walk without a gun. So, 2011 and 2013, these are the range for African-American infants, were four times more likely to die before their first birthday than Caucasian infants. That's a tragedy. We need to spend some energy there. In 2013, in the city of Jackson, the teen pregnancy rate was 105.7, so 105 per 1,000. Jackson County, that rate is 43.4, and the Michigan County average is 38.2. That's the city of Jackson.
Does the Jackson County differ?
Yes, yes, it does, yep. The repeat teen birth rate is 24, so almost 25% are repeating. That shouldn't be happening, and again, that was the per 1,000. 38% employers promote, and 33% employers offer smoking and/or tobacco cessation services. This is where we need to be doing the work at a systems level. 42% employers promote physical activity. 40% employers promote healthy eating, and only 16% employees participate. Just can't figure that one out in the worksite wellness programs. So, my request, talk to you about the successes and the challenges, and what our Healthy Communities, our Health Improvement Organization, would like to help support the work that we're doing. We're asking for an additional .5 FTE clerical support to support the Healthy Communities objectives. Lots of work that goes along there, so that would be for admin clerk. We're asking for your continued support for public health initiatives. These things generally aim to promote healthy communities, and with healthy communities and less disease and such, we save a lot of money. We're also asking, as a coalition, for you to be our champions for health in all policies. And I have lots of information on health in all policies, I'm sure you're aware of what this is, but it's a collaborative approach to improving population health by embedding health considerations into decision-making processes across a broad array of sectors and policy areas. So, the goal is to ensure decision-makers are informed about health, equity, and sustainability consequences of policy options during policy development. So, just a little bit more about that, I'd be happy to share lots, lots more, and then I have this little activity that I want to get out. For the most part, these statistics that I share fall into various categories, such as our health initiative, our nutrition initiative, health, active living, and teen pregnancy prevention. And the last page was, I simply won my category, and the acting group wanted to vote, 123 of these categories, you can read your contact. And we're even here, to give us an idea about where you feel best that we should be spending our energy.
Is this a match or fail?
Yeah. I thought you'd say out of my standards.
Motion to receive this document?
Sure.
All in favor? Those opposed?
Any questions? In five seconds. No, this is like a think quick, like, just looking at that data, just getting your first emotional report back to me about how you feel.
Realize that you're so.
No, you don't have to sign your name, and you won't get a score.
I'm sorry, Shelley, but we can't do that legally. Any action taken by this board has to be done in public, and has to be done when it's a majority of the board and recorded in the minutes.
Okay. I was just using this as a warm-up, cool-down exercise, so I, you know.
Please pass it to Senator.
I'll let Adam and Mike work the details there. Pardon?
I did.
I'll let you collect them. Thank you.
Just one question on what Shelley presented. At the end, she talked about a request for a half-time, full-time equivalent. That'll be coming through committee, I assume, or, I mean, it's in the PowerPoint, and that wasn't the official request, right?
Mike?
No, I've not seen the, you haven't?
No, no.
Adam?
Yeah, these are your updates of your strategic plan. We do them monthly now, rather than all at once, so this should come through the normal budget process. But it's appropriate that they, as they present the progress and where they're at, and what they need, that they state their needs, and then during, in the budget process, which is, we're coming right up upon, you'll see those types of requests. Thank you.
Thanks.
Christopher's out there lurking somewhere. Morning, Christopher.
Morning.
Steve, you're going to review staffing plan first, is what you're going to start off with?
Please, yes. Can I just pull it up here, add them on the computer? There we go. You should have this loaded in Board Docs as a PDF, and with permission, I have paper copies of this to reference and make notes on as I talk. I figured it might be handy as you roll through the presentation.
Motion to receive?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? duly carried?
Thank you. There's two different documents there. One's existing structure, and one is proposed structure. Now, my head even swam as I was putting it together, so if your head is swimming, raise your hand, and I'll stop and answer any questions you have as we go through this. JDOT is actually quite a sophisticated organization, and especially when you combine the shared duties and obligations of Calhoun County mixed in. So, as you look at the two structures, let me just point out one color to be mindful of: lavender. Anything lavender is shared. Happens to be my favorite color, and most of my kids like that color, so I feel all warm and fuzzy when we can share a resource. So, I chose to use purple or lavender to cover those shared resources.
Do you make a little like this?
I do. Okay. So, today we're looking at what I would call a Phase One staffing plan. This is something I've been working on for over a year since I started, and a lot of vetting has gone on internally at JDOT, amongst both Calhoun and Jackson, the both organizations. So, I just want to point out here, as I go through the overview, we'll start with a historical perspective, and then I'll discuss what I would call the administrative positions and resources that we need to succeed, and then the technical resource group positions and resources, and I'll give you some concluding thoughts. But please note, again, this is a Phase One of a general restructuring, right sizing, and a resource allocation plan for JDOT. We will be presenting, hopefully, here in 30 days. I'll be back at the March Study Session with a Phase Two, which is for our Operations Division. We're doing some cost-benefit analysis, pulling overtime records, things like that, to make sure we properly size ourselves. What this is all about is capacity. The road funding bill has passed, the timing is right, and we need to be gearing up and recruiting positions so that we can succeed in taking care of our roads here in Jackson County. Okay, so a little bit of history. Just going back to 2000, 2001 to 2007, we had a total of 108 positions during that timeframe. Today, we're at 76, and we have been for three or four years now. So, we have gone through a period of attrition in response to the decline in funding, and what I want to point out is that administration, just alone at the Jackson County Road Commission, had 23 people. So, when we talk about top-heavy, I would caution all of us to throw engineering in that mix because you have to pay for that service no matter what. I don't throw it in when I say administration and management. I, in effect, on the charts, you'll see engineering is listed separately because I view that as a cost center that you can recover and recuperate. So, 23 positions were administrative at one time. The remainder, of course, was unionized. Ninety-eight FTEs in 2008, and then 76 by attrition since the merger in 2013 with the county. So, we're at a historic low. We're barely able to function. I would call this cut to the bone. We are working an unprecedented amount of overtime. All staff, top to bottom, is really putting in a lot and toeing the line. So, you have a paper version here, and the way you can tell that it's the existing organization is you see the engineering director with the dashed red line around it. So, between the two handouts you've got, the one with the engineering director with the dashed red line, I call that a ghost position because it didn't exist. We had that position, but we've since restructured slightly. We realigned some of Joel Machowski's duties and appointed him as our senior civil engineer, a very valuable position that's better aligned with his talents and capabilities. So, that engineering director position has been vacant for about three months. So, what we're discussing today is also a springboard from a memo that I had written to administration. Perhaps you had seen it about three months ago where I proposed an engineering group that was a little more bold and robust and could be shared with the city of Jackson as well as Calhoun. So, let me point your attention up to the top-left corner where we show the FTE equivalents because that's where our eyeballs, of course, are trained to go as we look at budgets. So, the administration management team is 11, and currently, our engineering technical team is five for a total of 16. That's way down from 23. And bear in mind, we're sharing our resources with Calhoun. So, that's far different from the 23 that you had in the past. And then the unionized workforce, the association, is 60. So, that's a total of 76 FTEs right now. We currently have four vacancies. Two of those were lost due to retirement and two due to... Two positions also due to resignations. So, we're in recruiting mode for all four of those slots. Those positions are red-bolded outlined there. You can see the administrative services manager is one that we're recruiting for actively right now, and design construction engineer as well as a technician. This retirement just happened, literally a few weeks ago, and then we lost one crew member in Clark Lake. So, that would get us back to our 76. Now, you notice in my number counts, I throw in a term there, what I call net effective FTEs. Let me explain what that is. So, we have 76. It subtracted the vacancies to get our current net FTEs at 72. So, the lavender cells, myself being one, and that's a dark purple, meaning I'm a hardcore 50/50. They bill exactly half of my salary to Calhoun. A light lavender flexes. So, Sean Cirque, who is here with us today, is our project manager. Last year, he should have been a hard lavender. He spent at least half of his time, if not more, over in Calhoun, helping them with some heavy lifting and some projects. So, I don't expect that to be the case every year. So, you know, to be fair, I call it a light lavender. So, when we share those positions, we've essentially lost a half a person. So, I compute what I call a current net effective FTE. So, you've lost half of me and you've lost half of Sean. So, that's one person taken off. So, if you take the two shared people, divide it by two, you get one, so 72 minus one is 71 net FTEs. That'll become important as we roll forward and look at the proposed. So, even though we hire the people and pay the benefits and the wages, we have to remember we're not getting the full horsepower out of that individual. We're actually sharing it. And there are benefits to that, so it's not a negative comment, it's actually a positive. But I just want to make sure we understand that it isn't like the old days when we had 23 people 100% of the time. It's very different today. Okay, the proposed organization, shifting gears. This one has more lavender, dark lavender sprinkled throughout. And I'm going to go into the details, so I won't stop us here, but I just want to point out that there are 12 lavender positions throughout here. So, I would call that six people for us and six people for our shared entity in arrangement with Calhoun. So, in essence, we have three administrative people, and then we have three engineered people, engineering people. And then something unique here is a shared engineering director that's being proposed. Just like I'm a shared managing director hired in Jackson and working over in Calhoun, I'm proposing that we promote Angie Klein, the current engineering director in Calhoun, to be our engineering director here in Jackson. So, we will benefit from her talents and capabilities. She is vested in the retirement plan. She has over 12 years there. So, it seems beneficial to do that, and frankly, it balances what I call the justice scales of the shared arrangement and the brain trust. We want to make sure that we keep the playing field level, as level as possible, that is. So... Okay. Let's roll into the first piece of this, which is those, are those three administrative positions and resources. The senior accountant position, the management analyst, and what I call the accounting clerk, which is support, essentially for both of these positions, but mostly for the senior accountant. One of the rules in a PowerPoint presentation is don't squeeze too much in a slide and don't read off your bullet points, but I violated it here for lack of a better way to condense a six- or seven-page job description into something that you could get a sense of at a glance. I'll just try to give you the bottom line. When it comes to accounting in the road commission world slash county road agency world, we are quasi-business. Our funds are commingled with the county's funds. However, we have separate books completely. We do our own payroll, we do our own payables, but it all does fall under the auspices of Jim Latham and the county finance director. What we need in talking with Jim and strategizing with administration, I think it's been a long-term plan since the merger, is to blend our finances, make it tighter. I want this position to have a dash-line report to Jim and a hard-line report to me. We want a CPA preferred. We're not sure we'll be able to recruit that, but we're going to try. We need to have a higher level of trust in this person. After all, they are managing $25 million a year. We have a lot of pass-through federal grants. Auditors come in all throughout the year to look at our projects, make sure we're following all the rules. This person is going to be that internal reviewer, cop, so to speak, to make sure that we're following all those rules. As I scan through here, yes, go ahead. Yes.
Hey, Chris. Just, you weren't here at the time, but maybe you or Bob or somebody can explain this. Back when we were making the decision in terms of the road commission becoming a road department, one of the concerns of some of the commissioners and certainly supervisors in Jackson County was if we make this, if we have this collaboration with... Well, actually, this involved a collaboration with Calhoun County. The comment was, will this affect, will this affect Jackson County at all in terms of how we handle our resources here? Will it change at all? And we were told no, that this merger will not change anything in terms of the number of people hours, if you will, that will be utilized in Jackson County. But listening to you, it sounds like we already have a problem with that, and part of that's due to the merger.
Sure.
Commissioner, I don't believe that's correct. We were sharing resources. We were... Our analysis at the time said that we had excess capacity in our management, and therefore, we were sharing our management with them. So, by definition, you know, that means they're spending less hours over here. So, while operationally, we weren't diminishing our expectation, from a management perspective, we were definitely transferring FTE costs and responsibility to Calhoun in that aspect because they didn't have management over there. So, just to be clear. Good?
Okay. Are you referring to cost or are you referring to the number of hours that our people are spending here, like our engineering department?
Both, both. Truly. So, like, for instance, when Sean was over there last year, I mean, if he's spending 50% of his time over there, literally, he's spending 50% of his time doing the same job that he does for us over there last year.
And it does happen to flow back and forth between the two counties. We benefit from things that Calhoun has to offer us and vice versa, and all of that is accounted for, and that's one reason we need this accountant, is to make sure that everything's transparent and that proper reports are filed. I'd like to give you quarterly updates, work with Jim Latham to make sure our financial statements are fully representative of everything, including those revenues from shared resources. This position is shared 50/50. It's meant to be a high-level person that is also dash-line report to the Calhoun County Finance Director. They're searching for that person right now in Calhoun County to fill that slot. But in a strategy session with Mike Overton and Kelly Scott, we agreed that this would be a smart move for us because the bottom line, using an Alice in Wonderland analogy, it's what I call two rabbit holes down. You have public accounting, which you could say is one rabbit hole in accounting, in the world of accounting, but then you go one more layer down deeper with Act 51, which is very unique. It's very different from the way any other state does it, and I've worked in other states. So, coming here, it was a real mind-boggling experience to get accustomed to Act 51 and all of its peculiarities. Once you get used to it, it's great, but it takes a while to learn the rules. So, another key thing is we're currently paying a consultant for these services to the tune of about $130 an hour. This position, fully loaded with fringe, is expected to be between $50 and $60 an hour, about half that rate. So, not only will we receive half reimbursement from Calhoun, but we will save on the consulting fees that we currently pay. And the bottom line is it's a quantum leap forward with the county finance integration, and I'm passionate about excellence in fiscal management and budget awards and so forth. I want to do all I can to help the county achieve its goals and objectives in that regard. I don't have a slide dedicated to the accounting clerk, but that is an essential position that you see in a green block, meaning that it's 100% us. One of our problems at JDOT is we don't have proper internal controls right now. In the audit arena, you want to make sure you have two people that can run payroll, two people that can run payables, et cetera, back and forth, force a vacation on the one hand, have the other person run things just to avoid embezzlement. And unfortunately, there have been in recent years, you may have heard, some cases of embezzlement problems. Not that we have any indication of that, but it's very important that you have those proper internal controls. Plus, being a high-level position that's shared with two counties, I want to make sure that the person is freed up to do what we expect them to do, and I need an accounting clerk to handle the basic tasks to ensure success for them. Moving forward then, the management analyst. And I, I guess, I think of myself early in my career, and even Adam Brown early in his career, and most MPA students go through a phase coming out of school where they're a management analyst, doing homework assignments essentially and research. Here's the thing, we have a huge budget, 20 to 25 million dollars, and less than 40% of that is wages and benefits. That's unique from most other public budgets. So, we have this 60%, this basically 15 million dollars that swings wildly, that we get to decide if we're spending it wisely or not with the equipment we use, with the materials we use. There's a lot of research, a lot of homework, a lot of tracking to know if we're making smart decisions with that much money. So, this person would monitor those allocations, conduct research and analysis, work with the accountant to pull reports, perform cost-benefit analysis, compute return on investment. One example right now is the windows at our building are 30-some years old. I would like to know if it would pay off and how soon it would pay off to put new windows in. That's a fairly simple exercise. I think it wouldn't take too long for this person to crunch numbers on. But I also know there are grant programs. So, my bet and my hunch is this person will easily pay for themselves. And this is also a shared position, 50/50 with Calhoun County, because if they're going to look at our windows, they can easily just go over to Calhoun and look at the windows using the same template that they've set up here. So, this is a key player also in our budget preparation, review and monitoring, working with our senior accountant. And I would like them to serve as a managerial liaison in the joint purchasing committee. You hear a lot about the joint purchasing committee. It's a very successful group between the two counties, but we need a stronger representation here in Jackson. Jim Cooley and Terry Mead do an awesome job. I just need to have that third person sitting at the table, working with the team to make sure that our specs are tight, that we're getting what we want. So, this has been vetted, reviewed, and supported by the management team at JDOT, also our HR director, and administration at both counties as part of the visioning session that we recently held. Any questions on these three administrative positions at this point?
If one county were to approve them and the other county were not to approve them, what would be the situation?
Well, in this case, you hold all the cards. They're going to be our employee, and under the master agreement, we already have the blessing of Calhoun that if we hire the positions, they will welcome the talents and skills. So, for example, when I sent Sean Cirque over, he's our employee, I created the bills, and I billed Calhoun for it, and I switch my hat when I go over to Calhoun and I approve the bills to make sure. And of course, that's vetted with a second review from other staff to make sure that it makes sense. But the bottom line is it's an administrative task, and Mike, you can speak to the fact that I was serious about switching hats. I do it all day long.
Kelly's involved in that decision, too.
She is, indeed. She has senior oversight. Yeah, there's a multi-step process.
First, I was going to say, you're not, you don't want to quite phrase it like that. Andy Taylor.
Right. Actually, internally, too, I have a finance clerk. Believe me, it could be a little, as little as a mileage or a small reimbursement on something, and my finance clerk over in Calhoun will call me on it and question it, and we will correct an invoice. It's happened. So, there's multiple layers of checks and balances there. But it is an administrative level. Does that answer your question? Okay, great. All right. Now, into engineering. So, I guess bottom line on administration, we're looking to add three positions, which two are shared, so it's the equivalent of two, I would call it, one full-time and half-and-half. So... All right. See if I can back up a slide. Just to recap here real quick, we're looking at a shared engineering director, joint with Calhoun, so that's a unique color lavender. And then we're looking at three different engineering positions, and let me explain what they each will do. So, in this master chart, you can see Angie Klein right here. She's part of this, what I call the senior executive-level management team at JDOT. We meet all the time. This will be, the two new members of that team will be the accountant and the management analyst. Calhoun has a mirror image of this. So, there's basically four here. It's what I call my V8 engine. I've got four cylinders firing here and four in Calhoun, and as long as they're running smoothly and everything's tuned, we're great. So, right now, we're two down. I've got the retirement in the administrative services position, and I have no engineering director at this point. So, we've been really hurting, to be honest with you. So, we're anxious to get these filled. So, Angie has already agreed to accept this position. She's honored. She's earned her stripes. This is something that I've been looking closely at over the last year as I watched her talents skyrocket, and I'll give some highlights on her skills that she brings to the table. She would be here today, except she's up north for an engineering conference, so I apologize, she can't be here today. Okay, so the shared positions are on the right, and you see the green borders around those cells. That means it's a new position, so anything with a green border around is one of these new ones, or a green color like the accounting clerk. So, you have the senior civil engineer with a focus on bridge and hydraulics. Between the two counties, we have well over 100 bridges, close to 150 bridges that are technically called bridges. That's anything with a 20-foot or more span. We have a bigger problem. Anything with less than a 20-foot span is what we call a non-bridge, but it's a structure, and those aren't currently being analyzed or looked at. You've heard us come forward in recent months with some of those replacements. They're pricey, $30,000 to $60,000 easily. We need a person onboard who is passionate about looking at those and tracking them and assessing their conditions because they are, they are a risk for us. This person would also handle the lead on hydraulic analysis for those structures. Right now, we consult out for that. Every time we do a culvert, it's at least three... They're pricey, thirty to sixty thousand dollars easily. We need a person on board who is passionate about looking at those and tracking them and assessing their conditions, because they are a risk for us. This person would also handle the lead on hydraulic analysis for those structures. Right now, we consult out for that. Every time we do a culvert, it's at least three or four thousand dollars. So you multiply that times a dozen culverts that go out in a year, you've got some real money that we're spending and could save. So again, this is a fifty-fifty shared position. It's a hard lavender. Calhoun needs it just as bad as we do. And this is one of the beautiful elements of sharing resources between two counties. We can keep and employ a full-time bridge and hydraulics engineer. The one below is what we call a project coordinator. When we go out and do a project, in our modern era, people are hungry for information. We want to use social media tools like Twitter, Facebook, of course, the internet, the websites. We want to host neighborhood meetings on the front end of a project to seek input and feedback. We want to give update meetings through the course of a project, especially larger projects. Both counties need this desperately. And we've learned the hard way over this last year in working through Calhoun's has two townships near Battle Creek that are going through an extreme makeover, where they're doing all of their local roads. And they are hungry for neighborhood meetings. Their residents call constantly. We want to be proactive in our outreach efforts. And so this is really a communications person that's going to knit together the whole engineering group and kind of bird-dog all the engineers. Hey, where's your project at? I got to get some information out to the residents, so that people don't get all riled up. Their time would be charged to the projects. And relative to the engineers, which are higher salary positions, this person's hourly rate would presumably be mid-to-low level amongst that group. So it is a legitimate project cost, even on our grant projects. They would also coordinate ribbon-cutting ceremonies for all of us on our completed projects, things like that. The project engineer listed below is a new position we're proposing to add. That is basically a new graduate engineer fresh out of school. Someone who is green at the gills, but who is hungry to learn and can really be a technical resource. Sits in the cubicle, does what they need to, to help the other engineering team members, but also goes out in the field and handles documentation and surveying and so forth. And I'll explain the stair step, what I call the stair step, in a moment, because we suffer from a problem with succession planning. We just don't have it. And we need to be protected from positions leaving or promotions and so forth. So this is our focus right now, in the red circle. So moving into this. Again, this is offered as a follow-up to a plan first communicated last fall. And my understanding is there's some interest to partner with cities and villages in our county. We would have the capacity to do that with this group. So we're excited to do that. We could also partner with other entities like the Drain Commission Office and so forth to help with things, if the workload allows. It's an exemplary way to share resources. As I mentioned, the bridge engineer is kind of the poster child of the whole thing. It really shows how we can hire a high-level person and share them. Workload is extremely heavy. It's no secret. You drive our roads, three thousand-plus miles between the two counties, well over a hundred bridges, hundreds of non-bridges, thousands of culverts. Things are failing. These things were all built five, six decades ago or more. And we have thirty-eight townships that we're balancing and trying to figure out. And here's what we're finding. More and more of them are interested in an extreme makeover option. Spring Arbor is one we've been talking to. They're looking at, we started with just a neighborhood, and it's expanded into a, well, what would it take to do all of our township? How much money would that be? What are our options for financing? I've been to a couple, three meetings with them. Our staff has been. It takes time and energy. And we want to make sure we give them exactly what they need, when they need it, so they can make good decisions. And an engineering team is frankly your insurance. If you want to know you've got quality construction out there, you need an in-house team that is watching and making sure you're getting what you pay for. Because once it's buried, once the concrete's poured, you don't know what the rerod of the steel, you know, configuration is proper and so forth. So this team is responsible for documenting all of that and making sure that it's meeting all the requirements. So I reshaped it. This is another exhibit, another way to show it. So imagine Calhoun and Jackson blending together now, okay? I'm going to take the engineering people from Calhoun, and I'm going to blend it with Jackson. So this exhibit shows Angie right here at the top, in her unique color lavender, because she's not counted as an FTE here. And then you see right underneath the bridge engineer and then the project coordinator, right smack in the center. And then you kind of branch out. Over here is the Jackson side, with the green box around the new project engineer. And then you come over to the Calhoun side, and you see some other green boxes. And Commissioner Shaw, well, that's one of the things that I do have to go to their board on, is the green boxes for them. And all indications are, we're in good condition, and we expect that to be approved. Here's the thing. You notice how I stagger these. So I have a junior-level, excuse me, these are just engineering interns in the bottom. So I have like a new freshman, sophomore engineering student working for us in this box in the corner. And then I stair-step maybe to a second or third-year intern. Well, this fashion continues. Engineering tech one or two, someone kind of new, zero to five years, zero to six years. And then we stair-step up to someone with more experience, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten years. That was one retirement we just had. We had decades of experience just walk out the door with that retirement and no cross-training. So that's dangerous for us. This project engineer, that's the new graduate with the theoretical knowledge, but not a lot of practical knowledge. And then you stair-step up to what we're hiring right now, and that's the design-construction engineer. That's someone close to their PE. You have to work four years out of school, under-licensed PEs, to get your professional engineering license. And then you have to pass an exam on top of the recommendations you need. So it's a serious credential. So they may or may not have their PE, but they're close to it. But they can coach, guide and mentor that project engineer who's fresh out of school. And we hope that they could be a dynamic duo. And then you stair-step up, we're going to skip the permitting agent. I had to squeeze him in somewhere, so I put him right there. But if you jump over him, straight to Joe Machowski as a senior civil engineer.
Chris?
Yes?
You're thirty minutes in and halfway through your slides.
Okay.
Just giving you FYI.
Thank you. Great. This is really the meat of it, and the rest is kind of just wrap-up. So I think we're in good shape. So the senior civil engineer is kind of at the top and handles major priorities and responsibilities on projects. But the administration of the team and the priority setting of the team and the planning and the coordination is all handled by Angie Klein at the top of the team. So you see, Calhoun has a mirrored position to Joe, Christine Parsons, who's a PE with twelve years of experience. She's a new hire, actually. We hired her down here at a project engineer level, but she's proven herself to be worthy of that higher-level position, so we're making a change there. Okay, within this group, I just want to point out that we show org charts top-down, but in reality, it's going to be kind of messy. You see this whiteboard exercise that I was doing with my team. That's what it's going to look like. At any given project, the engineering director is going to assign it to, let's just say, Jane. And then Jane's going to have to work with two or three other people to get that project done. So this hub-and-spoke model is really how it's going to function. And you'll see here some sketched-out, what I call master project lists. Anything in Jackson is going to start with a J and have one, two, three, four, five, six numbers or whatever they're going to allocate their time. Anything in Calhoun is going to start with a C. Very simple accounting, and that'll be reported and invoiced accordingly between the two counties. So all of that will be tracked. I just want to give assurances of the vision. And I've done this before. I've done this before with cities, basically started engineering groups from scratch with great success. So this is not new for me, from an administrative level. I call this the technical resource group that's shared between the two counties. Engineering is required for everything we do. And if we don't hire in-house, we're going to have to hire it out and outsource it. So I just want to point that out. And there are a lot of benefits to having in-house resources. The sense of ownership, project and customer championship, knowledge of the players, skin in the game, I call it, consistency of quality assurance. We know what we're getting. We have high-performance metrics. I do, as a managing director, and full transparency and reporting to you what happens. So this is not, there will be no hiding the PE and loafing, so to speak. So substantial cost savings can be realized. Consultants right now, as the bills cross my desk, range from eighty dollars an hour for those junior-level positions to two hundred dollars an hour for those senior engineering positions, those bridge engineers and so forth. Our team members would be at least half of that. So we would save a substantial amount of money. And we know that the workload is there to keep this group busy. Here is basically the same thing you're looking at prior, but I just kind of took back everything that's not shared, so that you could see the highlights of the new structure and the fact that we really have twelve lavender cells. So the FTE equivalents up there, you'll see that I kind of discounted the fact that we're sharing all of the lavender cells at about half. Ironically, we're back to seventy-six. So when you do the math and you add in six new positions, and then you take out the fact we have twelve shared positions, and if they are being shared half and half, you have to subtract out six of those, we're back to seventy-six. So...
But getting a lot more work done.
But getting a lot more work done and saving a lot of money. It pains me to write the checks to consultants, to be honest. Sure, the project gets designed and done, but we never see, you know, we don't get the follow-up necessarily, the quality assurance. We had a disaster in Calhoun with a consulting firm. It really caused us trouble.
Christopher, the key is that when you hire people, you're paying them whether they're working or not. So you need to make sure that you have enough work for them to be continuously productive. So you're telling us that between the two counties, you have enough engineering work to maintain the staff.
Absolutely. Right now, I could keep them busy for at least three to four years, just planning and providing analysis to thirty-eight townships that are hungry to know what they've got to spend on roads. Even if we didn't have a dime to build anything, we could be very, very busy assessing our bridges, non-bridges, all of that stuff.
True. I understand there's been some pent-up demand on some of those issues.
Indeed.
Thanks.
And as we find, the more we give, the more interest there is, and it kind of snowballs and gains momentum. So we have, back to Angie here on this slide, we've realigned existing resources in both organizations over the last few months in preparation for a change. And one of those moves was to realign our Joe, namely, into the senior civil engineering position, where he's doing fantastic, to be honest with you, something he really enjoys, and it's something that through a series of meetings, he identified as something he'd like to do. We need a relationship builder with stakeholders, townships, state agencies, grant reviewers, contractors and team members. We need someone who focuses on excellent project management skills that can keep that team together, cohesive. We need mentoring and project QA/QC oversight. And Angie Klein has proven to me, and I knew her before I took this position from the outside arena, and I was very impressed with her. But this last year, she's really earned her stripes. She has really run the Calhoun department solo, with one or two people assisting her for a dozen years, and has an unprecedented track record on grant acquisition. And when I call MDOT and I talk to them or DEQ, they have nothing but good things to say. They're very motivated to help her in any way possible. That's what we need in Jackson. We need that same level of trust and integrity. So this has been vetted, reviewed and supported by JC DOT management team. She has instant credibility coming over to our team. They really like her. They respect her and her guidance and direction. Our HR Director has discussed it with me on multiple occasions, and administration of both counties has also approved this. So concluding thoughts as we wrap up. I'm excited about the synergy and balance that this achieves for us. Engineering, accounting and analytical functions are really ideal ways to leverage the shared relationship between the two counties. This fits well with our vision for Jackson County. It meshes seamlessly with HPO principles, as I reviewed them. And timing is everything. Now that we have a known road funding plan, it's go time, in my opinion. We know the money's coming. It's time to get some shovel-ready projects rolling and grants applied for and so forth. And our townships are hungry. We've mentioned that. And I can't tell you enough how stressful that is for our team, just knowing. We already have an unprecedented amount of township work lined up for this year, and we expect more. So they're very hungry. And the interesting thing about townships is when they decide they're going to do a road job, they want it right now. And they might come to us in July, but they want to do it right now. They want that job done yet this year. They might come to us in August, and they want it right now. So we got to be at the ready to some extent. So we know the HPO factors, but I just threw this slide in to show the congruence with those five principles, quality of management and so forth. Here's the stair step of the funding. I have a memo that I can leave with you after the meeting today that outlines this, and perhaps Mike can email it to you as well. He has a copy. But this shows that we're up sixty-nine percent in funding in five years. And we have to prepare capacity for that. And that's going to involve some planning, design and coordination. Here's Calhoun's, if you're curious. The same thing, it's just not as much money, but it's the same percentages. So between the two counties, we're looking at some serious money rolling in, and we have to figure out the smartest and best ways to spend it. So doing nothing is not an option. We've covered that. I don't need to really recap that much. If we hired consultants and we had a consultant army working for us, my experience has shown they have to be managed and babysat. And that takes capacity also. You basically have to hire project managers to watch them and guide them in everything they do. This is not a one-time workload peak. It's sustained. It's a multi-year backlog. It's at least a decade of work. So this is serious. This program has been carefully vetted and reviewed over the last year. I've mentioned that throughout the presentation. And what I like about it is it provides a strategic succession plan for managerial and technical staffing at both organizations. It makes us much, much stronger, just in case we lose people. I expect a lot more competition in the engineering arena, as well as the construction field. So we are at risk of losing people from time to time. So the bottom line, this proposal, in my opinion, comprises a quantum leap forward in preparing JC DOT for an avalanche of work in the coming years, and fosters new heights of intergovernmental cooperation and resource leveraging between Calhoun and Jackson Counties. So the requested motion, as we move forward, would be to approve an increase in FTEs from seventy-six to eighty-two, in accordance with the proposed organizational structure that we showed. And it basically, through the lavender cell, shows a shared resource plan. And that's what we have termed JC DOT's Phase One Restructuring Plan. Thank you.
Questions, Commissioners? Commissioner Elwell?
Chris, the Calhoun retirement system, is that similar to ours? And is it an open system yet or closed?
Are you speaking namely of Angie's retirement system, or just generally?
Well, the retirement system for the...
In general, it is a defined benefit plan through MERS, and new employees can enroll.
Okay. And here, we're a open system yet as well, correct, for the road employees?
Only our union employees can get into the defined benefit. We have defined contribution for non-union employees. So for example, when I was hired, I was defined contribution only. So...
And these positions you're talking of are outside the union, or...
These are all non-union administrative positions.
Okay, thank you.
Correct. Yep. They're all exempt for FLSA standards. Yes. Yes?
Phil?
Are we fairly certain on our monies here, and the state's going to come through, as you put in your graph?
We are. And the one unknown factor that gives a little bit of discomfort is the six hundred million from the general fund, which is later in the plan. We know the gas tax monies are going to come in faithfully, so we're going to get at least the six hundred million allocations in the first few stair steps. It's just that last six hundred million that, you know, this current legislature has tied the hands of future legislatures to find. So it is part of the law, and so it must happen, or some kind of amendment needs to happen to the legislation.
Certain would be to bring the staff on board and gear up, and then have something changed that we have no control over.
Understood. We're not, in my opinion, we're not at risk with this particular staff. Here's the thing, that when I look out, we have other retirements looming within a five-year window. And so I'm already worried about succession planning, and this helps to solve some of my worries there, to make sure we're strong. And if the funding's rolling in, then I'll replace those retirements. If it isn't, then we can look at attrition again. So there is an opportunity for attrition again, within a five-year window or so.
Thank you, Chris.
Sure.
Other questions, concerns? One thing I would mention, that while you never know what the state holds, we do know there's lots of pent-up demand for bridges and road improvements and things like that. And frankly, I think I would emphasize, we have seen a lot of movement from townships, looking at making improvements to the roads. I know there's a few names that he's mentioned that frankly, I was surprised, because just with, like, two years ago, they were pretty much adamant and fighting with us about, it was our responsibility to do everything as far as the road goes. And now, all of a sudden, they're stepping up and looking to do things, as well as even special assessments on some subdivisions and things like that. So I think that's progress. Looking forward to hearing more.
One of the nuances that the memo I just authored clarifies is that... One of the nuances that the memo I just authored clarifies is that, yes, there's money available from the state. However, the caveat of only funding up to fifty percent still remains. So any local road project, we can't pay a hundred percent of that. And there isn't even enough money to do it, even if that was lifted. So townships need to still have programs for local matches. And we have a seventy-thirty plan, not a fifty-fifty, as you know. So.
True. It's not that the law hasn't changed, and nor has our policy from that perspective.
Exactly. So that still exists.
So that's good. If there's no other questions, I think we're ready to move on, Christopher, to the next comprehensive patching program?
You bet. My team's right behind me. They moved up. Wonderful. Okay. With this item, I do have some maps, if I could get the opportunity to provide these to you. They are attached.
We have a motion, all in favor? Those opposed?
Thank you. That's also electronic, but I know eleven-by-seventeen is easier to read on paper. Jim Coiling was instrumental in working with our bid committee on this, and we have vetted this out through several meetings internally at JDOT. I'm going to pull up the memo here. Let me close out of this. So what you're seeing in front of you is our 2016 paving projects map that our GIS department worked with us to create. And it gives you a sense. I know in the past, you have mentioned and requested to know where our projects are and when they'll be done. So we're expecting to post these on our website as well for general public review. So this gives you a visual of what we're doing with the bid approval that is before you. These projects, Jim, if I'm understanding correctly, are about twenty-five thousand tons of asphalt. Which you take that times seventy-five dollars, you get a pretty hefty number, well over a million bucks, to do these projects. That includes some wedging on primary roads, correct, Jim? You know what wedge patches are? I'm just going to shift here to my memo that accompanies. All right. These photos show what wedging is. And here, what we're trying to do is essentially cover up things like this. This is an actual photo of one of our roads. And so for primaries, we have the easy solution. That's our responsibility. So we go out and we do these wedge patches. What I wanted to talk to you about today and get some feedback on was, what do we do with local roads? Here's what we do now. Bob, do you want to describe? You feeling comfortable? If we have a road like this, a local road, we basically send our spray patching crew out, cold mix, hot mix, we start shoveling, et cetera, correct?
We could spend days, or even weeks, on a section of road like this, that still, when you get done, is just a patched-up road. I mean, it's not properly repaired by any means, and we've wasted a lot of time and effort material just to try to make it passable and safe for the public. So that's where the wedges come in, as a more cost-effective way of doing it, and winding up with a better road at the end.
So we could spend tens of thousands of dollars with two or three crews on this stretch of road right here, and still have kind of a rough ride, cobblestone effect as you drive through this. And those patches may or may not hold up, depending on the material we've used and so forth. But when we wedge it, we cap it off essentially. We give it a sealant, so to speak, and we get an opportunity, in this example here, to see how it holds up before we chip seal it. So it gets a freeze-staw cycle, and the very next year, we chip seal that and basically seal off all the seams. And in this sense, we're able to rehab our roads, I guess you could say the poor man's way, because we don't have the money to do just a full-blown overlay on a road like we'd like to do, or reconstruct. So we take the bad stretches of roads that have empirically shown themselves, the blemishes, so to speak, and we fix them. So we do have a couple of townships that have programs where they give us the seventy percent to do these. What we're finding from an operational perspective, though, and this is one of those management analyst tasks that I have penciled out, it just doesn't make sense for us to go and send our crews out, our limited resources, to, well, I hate to use the term mediocre solution, but it's not the best solution.
It's a temporary fix, is all it is.
Right.
Not intended to be permanent.
When I was driving through Minnesota over Christmas with my kids, I took my children to the Vikings game right after Christmas, I was noticing on the roads that there'd be a pothole here and a pothole there, and it kind of looked like dental fillings. They were clean, they were flush, they were properly. That's what pothole patching is supposed to be. We've kind of started building roads with it, and it's expensive. The material's expensive, the labor's expensive. So we want to get away from that. Here, you could take a day's work, maybe half a day, and you'd have a wedge down on something like this, correct, Bob?
A few hours, you could wedge it over.
Versus days, weeks, and six to twelve people, fuel, materials, and so forth. So you might be wondering, well, how expensive is it? So in the memo I've provided you, our estimate is a total of about three-point-two million dollars per year, and I think it's an ongoing program that we would, we just have to pace ourselves, 2016, 2017, 2018, and maybe even beyond. And we don't want to start with high-priority roads. So subdivisions and lake neighborhoods would not get done first. We want to hit high-traffic areas, and we basically want to free up our limited resources, our limited manpower, and patch these roads right. And so when people drive over them, they don't have a mottled effect. They have something like this, and after you chip seal it, if the township so chooses to, and that's what we hope they'll do, is take the money they've saved on the actual patching, which technically, by Act 51, is maintenance, if we really want to call it what it is. I've got to go out and patch those potholes somehow, some way, and I'm saying this is the smartest way and the best solution. So it really brings up the question from a policy perspective, are you okay with us changing our practice?
I want to clarify just briefly, too. Our practice is, we do not wedge, or I should say, we have not wedged. It's always been, you know, let's fill the pothole. It's maintenance. And wedging, when you don't have any money, wedging becomes homeless construction. However, you know, our position is changing, partly because we see the wisdom in it costs us less to wedge than just dura-patcher pothole. And therefore, you know, we save money. So we end up with a better product and save money. So I don't think it's inconsistent with what we're doing. And we still reserve the right to, where it just needs a little dura-patcher time to not wedge. You know, even though the township may prefer wedge, because it's a much cleaner look, we're always going to be looking, which is more cost-effective at the time for that particular thing. And if it's a dura-patcher, so be it. If it's a wedge, fine.
Right.
Sir?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I think I and my constituents get tired of seeing roads like that, that a crew will come out and patch, you know, the worst ten percent of the holes, and then three months later, they're back out patching more just like it. And I just personally see it as a huge waste.
Right.
And it'll be good to see something that the public can see as a better use of taxpayer dollars than fixing roads, to be honest with you.
Well, from the crew's perspective, it's a hopeless endeavor. I think we have good people. They're out there trying to do the right thing, generally, working hard. I am shocked at how many tons of, if they're doing hot mix patch with the shovel, how many tons they move in a day. And it's a hopeless endeavor.
Yeah, I didn't mean they're doing bad work. It's just that's the way it's always been done, and that isn't good enough anymore. And the public's tired of seeing it, so.
Right. Jim, do you think we've had good luck with our wedges? Do they hold up generally when we put them down? How thick are they usually?
Inch and a half, we lay it.
Inch and a half minimum, generally. So it kind of wedges up, and then, and we also, we generally go out and spray patch around the seam, right?
Correct.
So that kind of gives a sealant to make sure water doesn't get under the lips of the patch. So. Yes, Commissioner Rice, yes.
Chris, you had mentioned that, at least initially, the actual neighborhoods themselves would not receive this option that you're bringing to us as far as wedging. But if it's, but it's considered, in this case, as you said, it's considered a maintenance. So at some point, when you do go into neighborhoods, because obviously, the neighborhoods have patching everywhere, and it doesn't work, when you do go into neighborhoods, then at that point, that seventy-thirty does not come into play then, correct? Because all you're doing is maintenance like you did before. Is that correct?
If they chip and sealed, or did an overlay, that's definitely part of our matching program. But this here would not be, we would call this patching. Is that, are we on the same page?
Yeah, just, go ahead.
If I understood, Carl, the question is, are we going to apply this to subdivisions?
Eventually, yeah, in second, third year. I think our team agrees that we have through roads, what I'd call through roads, local roads, that we have not wedged that need it. Folks Road comes to mind right off the bat, and that's one where, how much do you wedge before you fully overlaid the road? So we got the opposite problem there, you know, deciding.
Well, that's what I was going to say. There's a fine line there. I'm thinking of my little subdivision, and you could pretty much overlay the whole thing, and it's a dead-end street. It's not like, so when is that construction, and when is that maintenance?
Right. We would seek to develop some criteria internally.
Yeah, and clearly, you know, this will not be without consternation on some people's parts. You know, they'll be like, hey, I want that, and I want it for free. Why are you charging me? I saw you do it right out, you know, quarter mile away for free. So we'll have to make sure we're prepared for that. Yes, sir.
Chris, the picture on the screen would require just pothole filling and maybe some chip seal?
This here?
Yes.
I think the right fix would be some wedging, and then chip seal over that.
Correct. So do you have a ballpark figure on the pothole filling per mile versus wedging per mile?
Short answer, we do, on the back of napkin analysis I've done so far. Do we know roughly what that is? It's...
Roughly, to use our dura-patches, per mile's about six thousand dollars a mile, I believe.
Yeah, that's the rule of thumb we're using. But it depends on the road. Six thousand per mile.
Six thousand per mile, and what's the...
A lot of labor is involved in that.
This would be more, though.
What does the wedging cost, you know?
This would be more per mile, because you're building a road with it.
One thing about the dura-patters is, is that mileage is going to be based on an overall mileage, and most of that mileage is just going to be crack treatment, because we have to use the dura-patters preparatory to our other treatments that we put down. So it's not a fair comparison, because we probably, most generally, don't have that dura-patcher on a road that's as far as gone. There'd be very few miles of that. If you were to treat that, that cost would be astronomical on a road that bad. An inch and a half overlay on a mile of road, local road, is approximately ninety thousand dollars. Would be an inch and a half over that entire road from one end to the other. Now, if you take and consider in your patching, you're going to go out there and you're going to patch and put down however many thousand dollars, and then two weeks later, you're going to go right out there and patch again and put it down, because it's come out of the holes. And then two weeks after that, you're going to go out and put it down again. So the cost of patching versus an overlayment is astronomical when you come into legacy cost.
Well, that is kind of where I'm headed. It seems like we would be much further ahead to do the wedging.
Right. That's our whole point.
And get away from the pothole filling just be a winter project to buy its time till we can wedge in the summer.
Right. We still need pothole filling for emergencies. You do get your classic pothole in the middle of nowhere. So that's not broken. It's just, as we evaluated equipment, we're looking at buying all kinds of patching equipment, then we started to analyze, well, and that's my job, are we doing the right things? So then I started to ask, you know, maybe we need to switch the way we approach this, and the team agreed after we vetted it out.
It appears it's less expensive, and it's quicker.
Right.
And it lasts longer.
Yep. And as I've discovered, the team actually had this idea, I think, long ago. Bob, you had mentioned it to me, why can't we? And it was a very good question. So it's been brewing in our minds for a long time.
Thank you.
Historically, the one issue, just quickly, the one issue that always came up, the past administrations didn't want to deal with, is where? Which one? How are you going to decide and make it fair for all townships? Easiest criteria, we believe, is probably three: your Pacer rating on how bad the road is, the number of service requests that you have on it, and then your ADT, how much traffic. And that's why that your subdivisions, smaller twenty-five mile-an-hour roads, wouldn't be done in those first few years. You want to get your fifty-five mile-an-hour roads.
We'd still go patch them, to be clear. We just wouldn't wedge them yet.
Wedging would have to be out. I can sell that to the townships, as long as we can say, this is how we're doing it and why we're doing it. Plus, it's also going to allow me, I believe, to partner with those townships better, saying, look, we're going to make this investment and wedge on this road. Why don't you partner with us seventy percent on a chip seal? We'll cover it right up, and we'll get it taken care of for seven to ten years. That's a good sell for those townships.
And just to clarify, Sean's role is to work with all the townships as the liaison. He's our project manager, a senior-level person. So he's the one who has to face the headaches and complaints and so forth. Did you have a question, Commissioner Rice?
Actually, it was answered, because obviously, maintenance of the neighborhoods, we'll just say neighborhoods in general, is necessary. And obviously, one of the big issues, you know, local units of government tend to feel like their neighborhoods should be able to be, maintenance should be done there, or they should be resurfaced, if you will. You know, the comments that I tend to get from my constituents is, and I'm sure other commissioners do, is that we already pay tax dollars for this, and this, and this, whether it be the gas tax, whether it be other taxes, property taxes, you name it. And you want us to pay even more money for something that we've already paid for in front of our house. So quite frankly, I agree with them. And so certainly getting into the neighborhoods and at least wedging at some point would go a long ways. And, you know, like was said, maybe the chip sealing would be an easier sell than what we have right now, so.
Right. And we agree wholeheartedly. It's just trying to pick the priorities is the bottom line. That's why I cite that it'll be a multi-year program. If we move forward and try this this year, we'll get immediate feedback from townships. Right now, we allocate zero wedging for each township, and we're proposing to average about a thousand tons per township. That's only going to get us so far. So some townships will get more than others.
Chris, one more comment from me, if I could. You acknowledge, you're still going to have to fill potholes at times in some places.
Oh, yes.
And you and I had talked, I think, last year, when I observed some potholes being filled, that I think the public sees with a lot of gravel and water still in them. And I'm hopeful that you still continue to improve that process for the times that you have to actually fill potholes.
Absolutely. We have a standard operating procedure now. We did invest in leaf blowers, correct, the high CFM?
All the crews have capability to blow the holes out, whether it's water or gravel, whatever's left in it, before they put the patch, whether it's a dura-patcher, or a cold patcher, hot mix. And they all have a SOP to follow, so they go by the same procedure for all of them.
That's good, because the public sees it, and they're not engineers, and neither am I, but it just makes sense to clean them out when you fill them. And I think they'll appreciate seeing that.
Absolutely. Yep.
I think the public is going to see a huge difference and improvement over the next couple of years in the roads, truly. I think it's a great plan. They've done a good job. And this is going to move on to the process, and you're going to be looking for approval at ultimately our Tuesday night meeting.
Yes. Affairs and Agencies has this bid. It's also a memo attached to this item. Bottom line is, if you approve of this idea, we have a two-part bid there, where we want the, I want you to approve the twenty-five thousand tons for the map that you have, but also another twenty-five thousand tons for this program of wedging, where we basically pick up the asphalt, and we're hoping to purchase, our plan is to purchase a paver, rollers, et cetera, and do a lot of this work in-house. So instead of our crews out patching the traditional way that we've been doing it, we want to switch gears and be doing the wedging. So we can get for forty-eight to fifty-six dollars a ton, we can pick up the hot mix versus the seventy-five dollars a ton. And my experience shows that that differential of twenty to twenty-seven dollars is, makes it very cost-effective for us to do our own labor on this. So with that, if you're in favor, I guess we'll look for a blessing at Affairs and Agencies.
I believe you have one more item?
We do. Sean, if you want to step up, and Bob as well. Sean and Bob have worked together with our, what we call our construction committee, and they've prepared this memorandum. Do you want to give an overview, Sean? I've done a lot of talking today. Maybe they'd like to hear from you.
I shoot from the hip, so bear with me. About the time that we went to a five-member board at the road commission, the decision was made that we were going to seventy-thirty our dust control with the townships. And it wasn't put out that way to the townships. They basically in-house figured out what that seventy-thirty split would be, and then they put a cost per mile. a cost per mile, and then they charged that to the townships on how many, how many miles of gravel they had.
So it was not a policy, it was just a practice?
Yeah, it was, yeah, there was no policy set in place, it was just a procedure that they said, we can't afford this anymore, so you're going to pay a portion of this. And it didn't go over well, and there was many townships that decided not to participate in it, for whatever reason. So that created issues where residents had dusty roads and wanted something done with it, so then they did pass a policy that would allow a resident to come in. They wanted him to do a mile section, so he'd go to his neighbors and act as a spokesman, then they'd come in, we'd measure the road, then we'd go and write the contract for the private, and he'd have to bring a check in. We had many of these around, filling in the gaps where the townships didn't participate. With that, number one, it, it creates a patchwork of roads, treated and untreated. It's, that, which creates an unsafe environment. You're driving down a treated road, all of a sudden, out of nowhere, you're into a dust cloud. It makes it a maintenance nightmare for us to go around, because those roads, when you get rain, act differently. Your treated roads will stay in good shape, but your untreateds are potholing out, so we have to go around, waste valuable time and crews to patch those areas in and grade them up. It's just become a, a real scheduling nightmare. We send the contracts out in March, they come in over a two or three month period. You can't just start in one place with your graders and go, and then have the chloride trucks, brine trucks following behind you. This township turns one in, so you got to try and schedule over there and over there. We're very short of manpower. When we sat down at the whiteboard last week and wrote out what we had, trying to schedule out our construction season, we took our available employees and then took our critical services and took those out.
You want me to play that video, Sean?
Yeah, no.
I took video of them to show you in case you needed it, but not today.
We have the, the four dirt patchers, we need to keep running from April to November, as long as we got one. Our boom arm mowers, we have to keep those running to keep that brush back. Our catch basin cleaner, we have to stay on top of those. So once we took that manpower out, we basically have 15 people that we can assign to the projects, and there's things on the local road projects that we do that our employees are very good at, they make us money at. It's deburming the road, there's no contractor that can do that as well as we can, as cheap as we can. The patching ahead with our dirt patchers, that's always got to be our crews. Canopy, the trimming, that's the combination of our crews. When we grade, it takes six employees to grade these roads ahead of chloride. You'll have one in the grader, one in the truck, that's the fastest, most convenient way to do it. So out of that 15, now we're down to nine every time we got to fire up to get ahead of this chloride, and looking at nine men over the amount of work that we have is just killing us. So with that being said, if we could absorb the cost as we did prior to, probably 2008, it'd be approximately $100,000 is what we would have to come up with, additional to what we are now. We would have uniformity throughout the entire county, which would be huge. It would eliminate a lot of hard feelings that were created by that when it was instituted. It would allow us to start when we wanted with our scheduling, go around in a clockwork fashion, put our treatment of chloride on, and be done. There'd be no more individual contracts to chase around, there'd be, it would eliminate it all. I believe the savings would be huge for us, and not only money, but in our overall workforce adjustment.
Dust control is a preservative for gravel material. The gravel's the expensive part, the dust control's relatively cheap. So for 200 and some odd miles, 239.24 miles, um, the 100,000 to preserve what we put down is no different than doing chip seal on a primary road, for example, things like that. So in many counties, Calhoun being one, they do this. They, they fund all of the, the dust control, so they don't have those differential patch areas and so forth. And there are other counties that do the same.
All the surrounding, actually, Calhoun, Eaton, Ingham, Lenawee, and Washington, there's no cost to the townships in any of those counties. Hillsdale is the only one that does. 49% of Hillsdale's roads are gravel. So that, it gets to be a lot of money down there, and what they do is they, they end up partnering to the tune of about 60,000, which on their budget is a lot of money, but they, they end up paying about 70, 80%, and then the townships kick in beyond that. But by and large, nobody else does. And the one other thing that I'd add is just the fairness. It seems like our outlying townships have the lowest tax bases, they have the most gravel roads, they have the least federal aid projects in them, because they're not urban, they don't meet the criteria, and this would be a nice way for our outlying townships to get a little boost and, and potentially have a little money left in their budgets, because sometimes when we do a critical project like a culvert or something, they have a tough time scraping that match money together to get that road open back up, and this would be a boon to them.
The bottom line, this would just be a practice change, and I believe we can absorb the, uh, the money in our budget, uh, under maintenance for local roads. You have already approved the dust control bids, so I don't believe board action is needed, but we're just seeking endorsement for the practice, because you will receive questions from townships and so forth. Mike, do you agree with that assessment?
Yes, although Phil, Phil had a question, and I had a, well, hang on one second, Phil, let me just say that, you know, I think this, I think, I think we should move forward with this, and, and one, it's, it's, um, penny wide, where it's, you know, we're being, we were being penny wise pound foolish, let's put it that way. When you don't have money to do any dust treatment, you end up doing what we did, and that is, those who have money or who, you know, raise it, they get a little something, something here and there, and it's not the most cost effective way. It does not provide the best return on the investment by any means, nor does it provide the quality of, of service that we would like, uh, in, in our county. Um, huge, and I, I've, I've experienced it, you're driving along, and you're going at a pretty good clip on a, a, a treated road, and then suddenly you hit an untreated section, and, and it, it can be a little hairy and scary.
Absolutely.
But needless to say, uh, I, I, I think it's money well spent. I understand where we were and why we were there, and, and when you don't have any money, it is what it is, and we were in that position. We're not now, we're moving in a different direction. Again, I think our residents are going to be greatly, you know, their, their circumstances have been greatly improved on the roads, um, in, in their very, very short order. Yes, sir.
As a resident of a gravel road, I can tell you, in the summer months, we have to close our windows and put the air on, because if you don't, it's all in your house. Also, as a representative for Columbia, Norville, and Napoleon Townships, we have a lot of gravel roads, and sometimes they'll vote to pay for it, and if money's tight, we're on our own, so, yes, I endorse this. Thank you.
Good. Chris, would the plan be to do that twice a year, I think, which is what they normally have done still?
That's right.
That is correct. 2,500 gallon application in the spring, usually around the first of June, and a 2,000 gallon application around the first of August.
Yeah, it seems like it would be a scheduling nightmare and logistical nightmare to figure out where to do it and where not to.
And some townships only have enough money for one application, and you have to document that, and, yes, it is.
And the road agencies that I worked in prior to coming here, we, believe it or not, we had three different products, every township wanted a different one, and we flagged a start and stop points, and we had someone out there with a clipboard, we were, it was crazy. But that was the policy that the board wanted, and so that's what we implemented. But this is much more streamlined, we can keep our people busy doing other things, and the whole, what Sean was trying to explain was the grading, the fact that six people are out, and in two to three weeks, we can have all the roads graded when the, the weather's good, dust control people can move in, get it done. There's no delays, there's no go here, go there, oh, they're out, they can't come back for another week kind of problems.
And the other thing is, the timing is so critical on that, that you have to hit a window of rain where you have moisture in your road. And then once you grade that road, while that road is still somewhat loose, you need to have that brine applied within about 24 hours before the cars beat it back down, because if it gets beat down, then your brine's simply going to run to the edges of your road and you get no coverage. It's almost impossible with the way the, where we are now, to be able to hit those windows of opportunity because of the contracts.
Right.
And I, one added aspect, after these roads have been dust treated, they seem to hold the better, hold together better.
Absolutely.
They do. Less maintenance.
Is this, yeah, is this, uh, waiting for approval, or is this your new practice?
It's our new practice, this is advisory, we want to, you know, a, as I've gotten to know all of you, I, I want to be transparent and explain when we're shifting, so that when townships approach you or have comments, that you're well versed in explaining why we're doing what we're doing, so.
So as this becomes a topic in my townships very soon, next couple of months, this is our practice, though, it will be a no charge.
With your blessing, I'd probably send out a letter. Sean has actually already drafted one, it's on my desk, just advising of our change, that I'll give the board credit for approving it, or blessing it, I guess. Mm-hmm.
And if you let them know that I'd be more than happy to take that, save money and invest it elsewhere than their local roads, I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, that's the hint, that's the thing you have to tell them, is the money you would have spent on dust control, set it aside for other improvements, so, and that will in turn save us money on patching and other things in the future, so.
Thank you. I think it's still going to make a huge difference.
I just want to give kudos to my team, thank you for listening to us, I know we had a lot this morning, but, um, Sean, Bob, Jim, and others back at the office worked hard on this, and, uh, uh, great ideas are being generated, and we're trying to be more professional with how we approach, uh, service to our public. Thank you.
Question? Chair?
For clarity's sake, the items, uh, the first item on the roads and that type of stuff is going to go to committee? I saw that on the memo for, but this particular item is just FYI, and, or are we going to reconf- reconfirm this or endorse this?
We, we can take it through the process, there's no harm in doing that, I mean.
Just by emotion?
Yeah, I think, I think it's helpful to have a positive vote of favor, stuff like this.
I like that idea as well.
I love to have my back covered as much as I can, so, yeah.
Thank you for the clarity.
Both the patching program and this, if you award the patch bids, you're kind of endorsing what we talked about, I guess, by default, but, yeah, thank you.
I understand that, but there's a lot of that.
Of course.
Well, and it makes it part of the, the, the public record there, too, so that's all good. Thank you, Christopher.
Thank you, thank you all.
Hey. Next up, we have, next up we have, oh, the pop-up lease agreement. Uh, any questions or concerns or otherwise on that? I, I believe it's self-explanatory. If not, I would be, uh, interested in a motion.
I would be remiss in not commenting. Um, I find it interesting that we were able to do this. This ties into our number one strategic priority of economic development. We are assisting the city in their rebirth of their downtown, or their renaissance, or however you'd like to put it. If this type of model goes forward, you may see, uh, other businesses make small vacant space available, uh, which would be helpful again downtown, uh, and I think that, uh, it's a, uh, an appropriate program for the county to assist with it where we can.
I would so move the agreement.
You have a motion in support? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Duly carried. Any other items to be brought up by commissioners? Mr. Brown or Deputy Administrator? Did you have a question?
I, I think I got permission earlier to, from the administrator to speak to this.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I think you told me 30 seconds. So, start the clock. Uh, Commissioner Alexander and I met with the intermediate school district last week, and they, they have a new, uh, employee who's promoting math and science in their community. And the education team, um, going back six to seven years from the strategic plan, created this program, Math Makes a Difference, which most of you will probably remember. Uh, under the Cradle to Career movement, they haven't really found a home for that yet, but this new employee at the intermediate school district has, uh, is interested in taking that over, and so we'll be sending through an item through committee, uh, to transfer the funds that are in a trust and agency account, as well as all the, um, bookmarks and rubber wristbands for the Math Makes a Difference if the board concurs with that action. Right now, there's really been nothing happening on it for the last, uh, several years, as the Cradle to Career network has formed. So we were excited for somebody to take it up. Thanks.
Adam, I apologize, I forgot the date that we've tentatively set for the strategic meeting on the Cascades, uh, Phase Two Committee. We chose what day again?
April 14th.
That'll be a morning meeting if commissioners would like to attend and, uh, see what, see where we're at with the Cascades and what we're going to be sharing with the public and what we're asking for in the way of contributions. That would be, uh, an opportunity for you to do that. Any other commissioner comments? Sarah?
We made an announcement, um, last week for the fair, we, we're going to have Jeff Dunham there. Ticket, we still have some tickets, but, um, that's more of a condensed show, so if you haven't gotten your tickets, you should get them soon, because sales have been going really well. Um, we plan on making another announcement on February 15th for another show at the fair, um, with the tickets going on sale on February 20th, so be listening for that.